Welcome to the November Commissioner Meeting. It's now called to order. If you would, please join Vice Chair Langley as he does our invocation and Commissioner Rebboltz as he does our pledge.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we are grateful and thankful for the privilege to serve your people and to do the things that are right and pleasing in thy sight. Father, we just pray tonight that you will guide us through your precious Holy Spirit to make wise and prudent decisions, to do what's best for your people, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I, brother of the United States of America, in the pure and holy hands of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. A little bit of housekeeping. If you've got a cellphone, please either put it in silent mode or turn it off. Next, we want to talk about a conflict of interest. Does any Commissioner have any conflict of interest with any items on the agenda tonight? Hearing none. We're now looking for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. You have a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Okay, we're down to items for presentation. And I'd like to read this, if you would, for Commissioner Gary Bren. Let me first start by saying, we never know what tomorrow's going to bring. Commissioner Bren happened to stop by my office on Friday, September 27th. He had a couple of things discussed that was, he was very passionate about, and then he wanted to let me know that he was feeling a lot better, and he planned to run for County Commissioner in 2020. I can't tell you how surprised I was when I received a call from Ed Booth five days later informing me that Gary was in intensive care unit at Vidant Heart Center in Greenville. Commissioner Bren was a dedicated public servant for the people of Botha County. Gary served seven years as a County Commissioner, Chairman of the Board in 2015, and Vice Chair in 2016. He was also currently serving on four committees. I asked Gary's wife Kay a couple of weeks ago if she would like to attend tonight's ceremony. She stated that she needed a little more time to think about whether she was ready to attend this meeting. I called Kay last Thursday about attending tonight's meeting. She thanked me for the call, but however, she stated she still was not ready. I will be delivering Gary's plaque, a copy of the resolution honoring Commissioner Gary Bren, along with some other personal items, to Kay later this week. Please continue to keep Commissioner Gary Bren's family in your prayers. And Brian, you were going to talk about, on item number two, for items for presentation? Is that?
I'm going to do your resolution. Would you like to read your resolution?
You want me to? I'll be at it. A resolution honoring the deceased Honorable Gary L. Bren, Botha County Commissioner, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Botha County and its citizens lost a dedicated public servant with the death of Gary L. Bren on October 8th, 2019. And whereas Gary L. Bren selfishly served Botha County as a Commissioner for seven years during, beginning December 1st, 2012, through October 8th, 2019. And whereas Gary Bren carried out his responsibility as a public servant with a zeal and optimism which will be remembered and sought contingently to make this county a better place to live and work. Whereas the citizens of Botha County will reap the benefits of his capable leadership and selfless contributions to the county for many years to come. And whereas Botha County and its people have been benefited from Commissioner Bren's knowledge, leadership, and concern for his fellow citizens, and his contributions will forever serve as an example of untiring and dedicated public service. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners is serious to communicate in an official way its deep gratitude for the service of one of its own members and the sorrow of the loss of member to both his family and to the community, and to remember the manner in which he carried himself and his service to the public. Now, therefore, it be resolved that this resolution be forwarded to the family of Gary L. Bren with the express sympathy of the members of this board. And furthermore, be it resolved by the Botha County Board of Commission that it hereby expresses its gratitude to those family members for having shared so much of his life and for the benefit of the people of Botha County. And further, be it resolved that Botha County hereby takes pride in honoring the service of Gary L. Bren, expresses its appreciation for his many contributions to the Botha County, and to be further resolved that it hereby expresses, on behalf of the citizens of Botha County, deep appreciation and gratitude for the gifts of time, ability, and commitment given by Gary L. Bren in carrying out the duties of this board, adopted November 4th, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this resolution honoring Gary Bren.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right.
I have something on the side.
Sure.
I'm voting for this resolution tonight out of respect for Gary Bren's family, not necessarily for Gary.
Anyone else? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Again, item number two, was, Brian, was that?
That was item for Commissioner Langley, if he wouldn't want to address that, please.
This item was for tonight, but the person I needed to do the presentation for me was not made available, so we pulled this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're down to public comments. Ms. Mish.
Good evening, Chairman Abins, Commissioners. Welcome to a new Commissioner. Condolences to the family of Commissioner Bren. On hearing that the detention center presentation has been pulled from tonight's agenda, I wonder, haven't you given yourselves enough rope yet? What we have now is ongoing bad outcomes from nearly 20 years of misguided, derelict, and just plain bad behavior concerning our jail. In short summary, over the years, our jail has been used for political gain and as a political pawn. We turned our backs on pursuit of appropriate responsibility, and here we are mired in the consequences. Incredible, but not surprising, we now tack on the absurdity and expense of transporting inmates between here and anywhere in between up to four hours away for safekeeping. It's a long way looking back in that rearview mirror, yes, literally and figuratively. Please take responsibility and put our body politic under one mind frame of clarity. Agree to finally address the gravity of the issue that is our jail. I am asking you, this community, to have self-respect and move forward with planning for a new facility. We are way past the point of the need to an "I want what I want" referendum. Egregious spending, legal neglect, ethical neglect has bound us all. No matter the socioeconomic disadvantage, addiction, mental fracture, or knuckleheadedness that put people in our jail, we need to stop breaking their constitutional rights. Here's what I say to that. We've gotten away with treating you unfairly for a long, long time. We've not been too concerned your children can't visit you, or that you don't get to see the light of day. Hope there's no fire, because that's the one rule we know for a fact we're not breaking. So good luck with that. Don't run away in that big old parking lot if they evacuate you, because you know you get to look forward to your own Thanksgiving dinner that's been sitting around in those coolers, whatever that is. Oh, and hey, and happy Thanksgiving coming up to you. It's time we hold the rearview mirror up to 20 years of our own making. Like I said, happy Thanksgiving coming up to you, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, and welcome, Mr. Rebboltz. I am Debbie Riles. I represent the Board of Social Services, because I occupy the chairmanship at this time. I was here last month to talk about the resolution involving weapons on county property. I'm here again tonight. I wish I weren't here. I wish you had decided not to pass that resolution or to have it come forward again, but it is on the agenda again tonight. I want to speak out against it on behalf of the Board of Social Services. As I mentioned before, we do, we do a lot of work with people that are at various places in their life. Some of them are desperate, some of them are determined, some of them are volatile. We deal with volatile situations, especially in things like child welfare or in adult services, where we are legal guardians for people who have been declared incompetent, and we manage their money. These situations for the clients that we serve are often life and death situations. If they were allowed to have a weapon on the property, or if our staff were allowed to have a weapon on the property, this can make for an untenable situation for everyone, and somebody would probably get hurt. So I beg you not to include the Department of Social Services in any resolution that would allow people to have weapons on the property. We think it also would be problematic if we dialed 911 to have someone come because someone was firing a gun, and our staff also had guns. How are the police going to know what to do when they come in there? We do a lot of work on safety and around the issue of safety with our social workers and our income maintenance case workers, receptionists, everybody. And I think I've shared with you before, I am now a social work educator, I'm a retired Director of Social Services, and a national trainer in all of those roles. We do a whole lot about safety of our staff. This would not keep our staff safe, and I urge you to please not pass this resolution. If you do, please, I would rather you leave all county offices out, but please leave the Department of Social Services out of that, and don't allow weapons on our property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riles. We're in the items for consent.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If you could, item one on the items for consent, the multi-year printer contract, if you don't mind pulling that, we were not really clear on the recommendation for that one, and the folks from DSS are here tonight to talk about it, so if you can pull that one down, I'd appreciate it.
I'm going to pull that one down, to item number, item number one of the items for decision.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to pull, I'd like to pull item four, Budget Amendment for Business Contributions to Broadband Study, and item number 11, which is the minutes.
Okay, they will now become number two and number three under items for consent. Is a motion to approve the amended?
Under items for consent?
Yeah.
Okay, but.
No, no, I'm pulling two, I'm pulling them under item for decision.
Yeah, you're pulling, okay.
Pulling those two out. They become item two and item three under items for decision.
Gotcha.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the items for consent with the exception of number one, number four, and number 11.
Second.
Amendment for the items for consent? No. Okay. All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Five, two. So we're pulling down, just to make sure I understand your motion, so we get it right. That was what we voted on, right?
Yeah. Pulling number one, number four, and number 11.
Okay, all come down.
For decisions, individual.
Under item for decision, individual, correct. Okay, Katie? Okay. Okay, under items for decision, are we going to be talking about the item number one, which will be mid-year printer contract?
We have included in your packet a printer contract. Our copier and printers are coming up for lease renewal in a couple of months, and Derek has done a lot of research and contacted several companies about pricing, and we were looking to do a lease, continue leasing, because generally with leasing, they repair the equipment, they provide the toner, the cartridge. But if you look in your packet, the lease price that we receive is actually significant more than, significantly more than if we just purchased those things outright. So we wanted to bring it tonight with the recommendation to purchase the printers and copiers that are in your packet. It's over $30,000, so we would need the Commissioner's approval, and then we were asking for Brian to sign the agreement.
Where would you get service from if you purchased these?
Systail.
Where are they located?
Out of Greenville.
Any more questions?
I think what you're saying is, you're going to purchase it, but also you're asking us to approve a five-year maintenance contract.
Correct. At 43.
The total of the five year is 21,000.
That's correct. And we would get 50% reimbursement with the purchase. It'll be depreciated, but the lease, we could claim that monthly on our 1571, but we will get 50% whether it's a lease or a purchase, reimbursement on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the purchase as well as the five-year maintenance contract.
Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
We have a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven, zero, passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Item number four, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. This is a budget amendment for the broadband study. As you'll recall, we talked about this at the budget time. We've engaged the, River Street was Tri-County Broadband, they're now River Street. We've engaged them to do a broadband study, an engineering study across the county. The cost for us is $25,000. There's additional contributions that are coming in from businesses and organizations across the county who support that. Tideland EMC is contributing $9,000, Tri-County Foundation is contributing $3,500, the Botha County Committee 100 is contributing 62.5, and Nutrien is contributing 62.5 to make up the balance of the additional 25. Those agencies and organizations feel it as a benefit and believe that that will help move the county forward, and we need the Board to approve bringing that in as a budget amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner Bren.
I make a motion that we accept this budget amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Okay.
The only, the reason that I moved this thing out of the consent part while I was against it when it came up, because I really think that it's not up to the county to go out and get involved in commerce. If the broadband providers get plenty of money from me, and I'm sure they get plenty of money from everybody else, and they can pay for their own studies. But even though I was against it, I want to be sure that we do not proceed with this, Mr. Manager, until all of the contributors have made their deposit of what they promised.
We've engaged in the contract, there's $25,000. We are committed, the other folks are committed on that, so we are good. The, we actually had a meeting last week with the folks from the state office under the great grant. This is an opportunity for us to use this study to provide additional state funds to come in, to help build out a broadband network in Botha County, so we believe it is a tremendous economic development project, and that's where we stand with it.
I understand that, but you didn't answer my question, are we going to have all the money in hand before we proceed with the study?
I have all the money in hand except the money from Nutrien, and I've got a commitment from Ray McKeithen that that's coming, so I take Ray on his word.
Okay, well, thank you. Again, I feel like this is a great example of government getting involved in industry, and we really don't need to be doing that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would just speak to that, and this is an opportunity for us to be able to go to granting agencies and show them that we have a plan, and how we can help provide for the citizens of Botha County who need broadband services where the incumbent providers will not provide it, because it doesn't make them money. This helps us to be able to show the state of North Carolina where grant funds are available, to help come in and partner with those private businesses to build that out. We are not in the broadband business as a county, and we will not be in the broadband business as a county. This is an opportunity to partner with businesses and do what's right for the citizens of Botha County. Thank you.
Ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Five, two, motion passes. We're down to item number 11. Question about the minutes?
Within the minutes at the last meeting, I made a motion that Botha County not become a sanctuary county, and there was an amendment to my motion, which I agreed to. And now that I have all the facts, I find that the amendment defeated the purpose of my motion. So I would like to, I would like to go into that again, because the amendment went like this, that we would be willing to change this so that you'd have to have warrants, a federal warrant, before the sheriff had to turn these individuals over. Well, it turns out that the way that the counties that are sanctuary counties are becoming sanctuary counties is they are demanding warrants before they will hold someone. Well, do you have any idea how long it takes to get a federal warrant to do anything? So what you've done is you've added to the system, and you've thrown roadblocks in front of the detainers. Now ICE, Immigration, wants to use detainers. The reason that they want to use detainers rather than warrants is, number one, they don't have to go jump in front of a federal judge in order to get a warrant. Number two, they don't always want to charge these people. Sometimes these people are wanted by ICE because they've been involved in other scenarios, and they just want to be interviewed to see whether they want to charge them or not. There's a whole lot of things that detainers do that warrants don't. A warrant is a really big deal in court of things, but the strategy from the counties that are not cooperating with ICE is to demand a warrant. And I want to bring this up. Commissioner Waters made this, and I agreed, made a motion for this, and I agreed to it. And what I want to say to you is, will you rescind that motion, and let's get back to becoming a county that turns over people to ICE based on detainers rather than a sanctuary county, which we have become because of this? I didn't know whether you were aware of that or not when you made the motion.
Mr. Waters.
I have a question. Charlie, will you? Well, you're supposed to do that.
I was giving the call.
I guess where I got this, and I'm trying to remember, that in the presentation that Charlie had done, I thought that when someone comes in, what is the procedure? How about going over the procedure? You pick somebody up and?
Before we get started, how many inmates have y'all turned over or not turned over to ICE as a Board of Commissioners? I guess that's, that's what I was wondering.
That's not a legitimate question. You're the policeman, we're here questioning you. You're not here questioning us.
I'll beg to differ on that.
Oh, really?
It just happened, sir.
Well, this Commissioner going to let you do your job.
We, but once again, that there, we are obeying the law, we're abiding the law. We have not, and we will not, release anybody that ICE has a detainer on. We haven't in the last five years. We will not. That's not going to change unless it becomes illegal or unconstitutional for us to change that, and that's, we're not, we're not looking to get advice from the Board on this. We're doing what we can by law, and we'll continue to do that. The sheriff has been adamant about that, and he's been pretty constant on that. So to your question, anybody who comes through our jail, checks are done. If they are wanted in another state, or if they are wanted by ICE, the information will be there, and if there is a detainer for us to hold them, we will hold until we hear back from ICE on whether they're going to come do something with them or not. Now, if we send that information, and ICE comes back and says, yes, we do have a detainer, we'll say, yes, we've got him. When do you want to come get him? If we do get information from ICE that says that they're not going to come get him, then, and we don't have a reason to hold the person, then we will release them, but as of yet, that hasn't happened. In our time of looking back over the last five years, or at least Sheriff Coleman has been sheriff, every time that there's been a detainer or a hold, we have sent the information. Every time they said that they're going to come to pick the person up, and every time they have come to pick the person up.
I'd be glad to add the word "detainers."
Okay, I think that would solve the problem, warrants and detainers.
Yeah.
Yeah. That satisfies me.
Okay. That's showing up electronically if there's an outstanding detainer?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we have, we have a very good relationship with ICE as an agency, and with the local agents that they have, just like a lot of other state, local, and federal agencies. Absolutely.
Yeah, I move that we amend that and add the word "detainers" for outstanding warrants.
Sam?
I just got one question. Over the years, how many people have you held for ICE with these detainers and then turned them over?
We've only checked once, and that was a little bit a while ago, when it first started to come up, and at that time, it was right at 100.
100?
Right at 100. And that was, we did the look back, looking for, I believe it was December 3rd of 2014, when the sheriff was sworn in. So it does happen, and each time that we've sent that information together, and they've come and picked the person up. We haven't had a situation, to my knowledge, where they would come and do an interview and then leave. At any time that we've had that, that it would be that they would come pick them up. You know, there's plenty of things that have come up that have been misinformation and wrong, especially when it comes to the sheriff's stance on what he believes. He actually believes that ICE should be doing more, that in a lot of cases, we're dealing with problems where a person gets arrested for a crime, and then we're dealing with whether they're a previously deported felon or not. The sheriff wants ICE to get in more of, they committed a crime to get in jail at that point, so they want them to do more of why they were in jail in the first place, because you usually are not going to the jail unless you're committing crimes, and that would go against your status if you're, if you're illegal or not.
Just a second to the amended motion.
I'll say.
Discussion, we good? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Five, two, motion passed. Are you okay with the motion, Katie? You got everything? Chief Rose.
Yes, sir.
You ready?
Would you like for me to start the discussion? Okay. I guess just a brief summation. We started talking about body cameras and in-car cameras and the budget workshops. It's gone through that process, it was approved, and the budget, got information there. We spoke about body cameras and the contract and the agreements that were going on between body one slash utility, and that was voted seven to nothing. It was a part of the paperwork that the financier slash other folks required a resolution of the Board that was brought back at last month's meeting. There were some questions back and forth about some of the particulars of the detail, whether it was a. of the detail, whether it was a lease, whether it wasn't, interest rate, things of that nature, and the agreements between, um, between the agencies. Um, to my knowledge, to Commissioner Richardson's questions that he had, was that about interest rate, which can be answered?
Brian, Brian?
Yes, sir. The, um, the agreement is, is, um, it is a purchase, um, but is, it looks almost like a lease, um, in that during the term of the period, the vendor will come back in at month 37 and replace every bit of the equipment. They have an agreement with a financial institution that allows us to make yearly payments on that instead of making a lump sum payment. We asked the question, what if we make a lump sum payment? Is there a cash discount? And they said, no, it is what it is. So, it makes sense for us to do that and to essentially finance it at 0% interest because that's what it is over those five years because it allows us to take our money that we would be paying upfront and, and invest it and make money off of it. So, um, it's a 0% interest. There's not a cash discount, and, uh, that's the way the financing piece is set up.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I think you, you guys have answered most of the questions that I had. I just wanted to be sure in the, in our lease or contract agreement that we have with these people that they're gonna come in and do maintenance on these items a, as needed.
That, that's correct, and that was one of the, uh, really, um, go no-go situations for us, is that once again in the first presentation, I believe second presentation, again, we're not dealing with cameras. You know, they're called cameras, but they're computers. I mean, it's, we're talking cutting-edge technology that we have to stay in front of. It has to work. It has to work correctly. So, that was a break, no break on that, is that they will take care of the items, and it's a better deal on if something breaks, we send it off, we get, we're gonna get better service, quicker service than we were with the previous, um, vendor that we have.
And that's at no additional cost to us?
That has, yes. There are stipulations and pieces that go about that as, about, you know, whether it's, um, you know, normal wear and tear, or whether it's, uh, you know, something that could involve negligence. Some of those things can come up, but they might not cover, but I think everything can be talked about at the time. So, just to be honest, that's out there, and I believe Anita can probably give more on that.
Yeah, pretty much the warranty covers anything except for willful neglect on our part and an act of God, which would then be covered by our insurance carrier.
Talking to other vendors, is that, you know, these are body cameras, so they're gonna be used on deputies who are gonna be running and fighting and, and all of that stuff, and it, so there, there is a place, and it's not just gonna be normal use for law enforcement, it's not normal use for regular civilians.
Let's have one more question.
Okay.
The, uh, the data from this is gonna be stored in the cloud for how long?
They are, from my understanding of this, and I think I have a pretty good hold on it, is, is that they are gonna back our policy on retention, since they are in multiple states, that different states may have different statutes on what retention policies. Are our retention policies match the retention policies that the state gives out in North Carolina? So, it, it's gonna match and mirror that. From my recollection of, of how things are gonna work on that is that, that on certain crimes and criteria, we may have, actually have to hold information indefinitely. So, we're gonna hold that information, and we're gonna be able to move stuff to discs and keep that. We're also gonna be able to keep stuff in the cloud, but anything other than, than, than the normal moving and keeping stuff in evidence, I think we're gonna keep it for 90 days. Does that sound... 90 days, which normally for us means that we'll keep it for at least that, and it might be 120 or 180 before we actually get rid of the, the material.
But, our problem with 90 days, because people can bring suits, uh, longer periods than 90 days.
Sure. Uh, and, and that, that, that's really the double-edged sword of the cost of keeping things and the rules and regulations that you have. You know, if, if you, if you do have something that is a part of a crime and you've got an evidentiary value, then we're gonna be keeping that data. We're gonna be keeping it for at least as long as, as the, the case is open and appeals are through and all of that stuff. Some cases, if it's attached to a felony, well, then we'll be keeping that information indefinitely. But if it's something that we have data, we have video footage of something, and there's not a charge that goes along with it, we will keep it for at least 90 days. But if there's a complaint that comes after that, then the, the footage may have been erased as of that policy. But in our experience, most complaints that come against us will come within 90 days. Most of them will come immediately before we even know about it.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, we approve the resolution, uh, Exhibit D entitled the Obolgor Resolution.
Is there a second? Second. All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. All of those opposed, 7-0 unanimous.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you remember, last month, I was here asking about, talking to you about online listing, something we might want to try, and just asking your opinion. And, uh, on Thursday after Monday's meeting, Mr. Michael May came down and gave us a demonstration, and I asked him, would he come back tonight and talk to you about online listing for business personal property right now? And if it works out, we might get to our regular listings of personal property. So, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Michael May. He's with South Data. He's the sales, sales manager for this region, and, uh, he does a lot of traveling, does a lot of talking about online listings, so he ought to know everything y'all want to know. Come on, Mike. This is Mr. Michael May.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it. So, uh, second meeting doing this, so anything you guys want to ask me, that's fine. Uh, I'm from a company, South Data. We're based in Surrey County, Mount area, North Carolina, and, uh, we do the same service for numerous counties all over the, uh, the state right now. And essentially, what we're doing is allowing businesses to list their assets electronically through a website that we maintain with all the security features and settings that you'd want to know about. We've been doing business with your organization, with your county for, Bobby, I don't know what, 15, 15 years now? 15, 20 years? Uh, we produce millions of tax documents for, uh, counties all over the country, and this will essentially simplify, speed up, and allow CPAs and businesses to list their assets electronically, in which the tax office will in turn set the values appropriately and turn around those value settings faster, more accurately, and then be able to tax on those assets in a much more efficient manner. This is just step one of the ability for you guys to leverage technology through our company. Along with this, other counties typically will do e-statements and other electronic services through us that either will save your staff's time, allow you to do more, allow them to be out in the field more often, and essentially do their jobs, which is trying to find items in the field that ultimately help generate tax revenue for your county. So, I'll stop there. Uh, I can go all day, but I think that's probably enough information.
Question?
Sure.
Mr. Richardson?
After the first, after the first year this thing is set up, what, what is the annual cost? How do you, how do you figure that?
So, it's a dollar per business?
A dollar per business?
Yes, sir. Yes.
There's nothing by the page or anything like that?
No, sir.
Yeah, nothing by the page or anything like that?
No, sir. All the printing costs are already, you guys are already paying that through us. Uh, your listings are getting ready to go out probably here in the next 30 days. Uh, you're, we charge you per page on those items along with postage. Um, that's a separate entity. This then takes those physical documents, digitizes them, and allows your businesses to then publish those in a digital format back to your tax office for them to ingest and then update the values as needed.
What is the, what is the process for setting values that you now use? And will, and will your system help that?
So, our, I can't speak on the process of setting values. Our system is going to eliminate the process that you guys are, that the county office is going through from receiving, having taxpayers coming into the office, having CPAs coming in, out, business owners constantly coming in the office, taking up their time to do things that can be done in a more efficient manner. It's the equivalent of, um, you doing self-service on an online format now versus either calling up somebody or going into the, somebody's office. So, it's just driving people into an electronic format to do self-service, which ultimately frees up staff members, which you have a limited capacity to have from a budgetary standpoint. From the values, I can't speak to that. Bobby, you can probably speak to that.
Uh, we usually, the acquisition cost of, uh, property depreciated down, and it just comes to our market value. So, every item will, any new item will have to be listed manually because they don't have it in the system yet. So, that will be acquisition cost and depreciate.
We're not mandating that people have to file electronically. You can still file on the old form if you want to.
That is correct. Uh-huh. And we know probably more people will still file on the old form than the new ones, but, uh, I think it grows every year, doesn't it?
Uh, yes, sir. So, essentially, every year, the, the process continues to grow, and it's really just step one in allowing our company to help you guys transition away from paper, which is expensive. Everybody knows that, and move things towards a more digital platform along with other i, items that we have, um, that you guys should move to as you get down the road with this, with us.
South Data already has our data in this system as we're gonna get ready to print abstracts, so they already have the data in the system.
Yeah, so I did the same thing for Stokes County, um, about three months ago. Uh, they adopted our e-statement platform, they adopted our online listing service, they adopted our scanning process as well. Um, so, we're doing this for other counties throughout the entire state. Uh, we, I think we work with 90 of the 100 counties, almost 90 of the 100 counties throughout North Carolina currently, um, and we continue to add more as, as it goes.
Commissioner Langley?
I make a motion that we approve the online listing for business personal property.
Is there a second?
I'll say the motion.
All of those in favor?
I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, we are not, in this motion, we are not approving the extension of time. We're approving the normal listing time. The, the extension of time requires a separate vote each year by the commissioners.
Normally, it's 31st of January, but on the business, most people ask for requests to extend it, and April 15th is as long as we can, uh, extend it. But there is a statute says you have to have it out before June 1st, which I think we got in that last week, but, uh, I don't think we have anybody that's gonna request anything that long.
So, we, we, we normally give extensions when people ask for extensions, but what I'm talking about is the commissioners are not extending the listing period.
No.
We're keep, we're, okay.
Like we've always. I would have to come over if it was a snowy time and ask for...
And that, that's the same that I see everywhere I go. The same, you, you guys are saying? Yes, sir.
Okay, time to vote. All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous, passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. Bobby?
Thank you. Am I still up here? I got... I got some other things. Yeah. Settlements, yeah. Okay. I have, uh, reached agreement with Michael and Susan St. Pierre to settle on two properties. I think that's in your package. Uh, Mr. Francisco and Mr. Scott Casey have worked, we've all worked together to come up with some, try to come up with, uh, good fair values, so, uh, I, if you have these, uh, we have one parcel that is, uh, went from 132,006, 36,066,000. That parcel is a part of a two-lot, uh, parcel, and the driveway comes across it, so it blocks off lot number two, and about half of it is wetlands anyway, so, uh, the other one is we reduced it down from 325, from 370 to 325. Um, I need your approval on those if you...
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. 7-0 unanimous, pass.
Your, your second one is, uh, Kimberly Sanders Rogers. I think right now she's using Barnett, so, but it's on the property record as, uh, Kimberly Rogers. It's, uh, one lot, Smugglers Cave Cove, and we reduced it down to $50,000. If you look at it, you'll see that that lot is more than half, uh, wetlands. So, I'm asking you to...
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor, please raise your right hand.
And we had one more, one more today, but pulled our application and not going to the property tax commission, so that will make sure we don't have to do it anytime soon. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Just wanted to say, if I may, uh, we had three cases, and we were scheduled to have them heard in Raleigh on Wednesday. They set aside four days for us to go up there because we've got quite a few, but these three were set for this Wednesday, and I was very happy to see that we, we were able to settle all three of them in one form or the other. So, don't go to Raleigh on Wednesday, if I can tell you.
Thank you, David. Christina?
Ms. Mill?
First item before you this evening is regarding the, uh, Beaufort County Water Department AMI project. Each month, I give you an update, so I'd like to do that at this point. Currently, of the original 13,250 meters that were included in the contract, 13,147, or 99%, have been completed, so this project is moving along swiftly. Regarding that, we get to, uh, the agenda item, which is, um, when the AMI project was initiated, it was estimated that there were approximately 13,250, 250 meters that needed to be replaced. As the end of the project nears, the projected number of meters is approximately 13,500. Uh, the attached budget amendment transfers $60,000 from the contingency line item, which would leave, uh, over $80,000 in the contingency line item. So, again, uh, when this project started, due to, um, our computer systems and the way accounts have been updated and the status of those accounts, we were unsure of the exact number, so we estimated it 250, so that's less than 2% difference, so, um, requesting that the money be transferred from the contingency line item.
Motion to approve the amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Stan?
Christina, as we move further and further down this road towards completion of this project, have we saved on any jobs in Beaufort County?
Have we saved any jobs?
I mean, have we cut any jobs, saved the taxpayers money on having less jobs because of these ultra-efficient meters?
Yes, we've had people, uh, that we previously had, um, four full-time meter readers plus a lead meter reader, and due to the number of accounts that were increasing, we would have needed to hire additional people, so we have not hired those additional people. And as we have had people leave the county, we have not filled those positions. So, we currently, uh, have a lead meter reader and two meter readers that will be transferred to meter technicians. So, our staffing is less than it would have been if we were still doing direct read meters.
So, you've saved on two positions?
Two, if, probably three.
Two possible.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion? Mr. Duncan, you got, got a question?
I was gonna make the motion. Did Jerry do it?
I think he already did. Then we already have the motion, okay. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, 5-2, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, Kristen.
Commissioners, the next item that you...
Commissioners, the next item that you see is a proposal to engage with Earl Warren Architect to provide design work for the courthouse. If you recall, there is a capital improvement fund that is now set aside each year with the remaining funds, and this year, an emphasis will be placed on the courthouse for various improvements due to the condition of the courthouse, the substantial amount of rotten wood and decay, and also due to the, just the state of the courthouse. It's recommended that we contract with Earl Warren to assist with the design purposes of the replacement of the windows and assist us with that. Due to our purchasing policy, I needed to bring that before you since it is a professional services contract.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion. I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
What do you have to design to replace a window?
It's not just the individual windows, I understand, the large windows on the end and then also the entrance, the rear and the front entrance where that has been, it just, because of the wind requirements and the building requirements and the zone that we're in, that as well as the tie-in with the soffits and the fascia and tying into the new existing roof that we have, the manager and I have spoken, and we would just like to get the experts' opinion, professional opinion on those items.
Isn't Warren going to have to go hire a structural engineer to do this?
He did not tell me that he would need to do that.
Is Warren a structural engineer?
Not that I'm aware of, but if he does, it would be included in this contract, and it would be a subcontract to him.
Does he design wind loads?
He indicated that he could.
Well, you know, I do a good bit of work for architects. Most of them go hire an engineer to do this kind of thing.
Yes.
And, you know, what other than replacing windows is Warren going to be involved in?
The window replacement, and again, the soffit and the fascia repair work, the tying that in, the repairs, and also the architectural determining the best path to move forward with the cornices and the dental work and things of that nature.
This is contractor work, not architectural work. This is more engineering than it is architecture.
But he would do it all under his umbrella. Again, if a structural engineer would need to be hired, he would hire, he would be the key point and the key, the architect of record that would do the submission for the building permits and that type of thing. When we previously used him for the previous courthouse project, Ron Pledger is the electrical engineer, and Ron worked under Earl's direction and was paid through Earl's contract.
Don't the people who build out those windows for replacement, and don't those windows have to look essentially like the windows that are in the courthouse now in order to meet the city's historical standards?
No, sir, because the courthouse is not in the historical district.
Oh, okay. Well, don't the people who build out windows of this type, don't they provide their own design and their own certification for wind loads?
They do, but that's for the actual manufacturing of the window, not for actually looking at the installed product and following the construction to make sure that it's installed properly and tied in properly and installed properly.
Well, I'm not going to vote for this because I don't think it's architect's work, number one. It may, and I don't really think it's necessarily engineer's work. I think it's contractor's work, and that he's the one that's giving us the guarantee for the wind loads, he should be the one if he has problems with this. So, I think we're wasting 8% of the projects, and I don't intend to vote for it.
Yes, Mr. Duncan, repose.
What is the overall projected cost of the project? Do you have any idea of that yet?
Approximately half million.
So...
That's what the, that's what the capital.
So, we're talking about $40,000 to the architect?
No, sir. And actually, what was presented before was about 418,000 for the courthouse, and so it's just over 30,000 that it would be for the architect. And again, I understand Commissioner Richardson's concerns, but again, something that we have discussed numerous times is that we are trying to do things the right way and do them one time and then move on, and so that's my recommendation to hire a professional, someone who is familiar with it, and to make sure that we do it once and don't have to go back to it again.
Commissioner Boz.
What you just replaced in the fascia board and the windows in the courthouse?
And the doors.
And the doors. Well, how long is, it hasn't been that long that we replaced the doors and put new handles up, has it?
No, sir, that was just the hardware that was.
That was just the hardware? Who spent all that money on the hardware?
Yes, sir.
Have you seen any evidence of any rot or decay in the windows?
Yes, sir, absolutely, much. There's a lot, there's actually, if you walk around the perimeter and you look up, you can see holes.
And...
Successive.
I understand we want it to look good, but Commissioner Richardson asked the question, why do we have to have an engineer to tell us to put in new windows if we know we need them? We don't use them for our house.
It's not the individual small windows, it's the large windows, the windows on the end, the windows on the front, the windows in the rear, it's the large windows, not the individual windows.
So, if you put windows in a church, you need an engineer. They got the windows about the same size as the courthouse, would you need an engineer?
Yes, sir, and because the windows that are going to be put back will not be the same as the ones that are there because we are in a higher zone for wind loads because of it being close to the coast. So, those windows that are there now are not up to code. They have to, more than likely, instead of being one large pane, we're probably going to have to divide those into four, maybe possibly four or six separate windows in order to get the strength and to get the structural integrity.
Thank you.
Mr. Dethridge.
We have a contractor for this job, do we not?
No, sir, we do not.
Are you acting as a contractor?
No, sir, I'm not acting as a contractor.
Well, you are engineer.
I am an engineer, but I'm not a contractor.
And you think it's wise that we hire another engineer to install windows? Let me ask you, the people who would be installing these windows, is this something they do on a regular basis?
Yes.
And they install large windows? They know how to flash the windows properly and make sure they're put in properly and locked down the way they're supposed to be locked down? Do they always have an architect watching over them every time that they do this?
Commissioner Dethridge, I do not know how to answer that question because I do not who they, the contract has not been awarded.
Oh, okay.
Again, the contract has not been awarded, so I can't tell you what they do or what contractors do. Each of you know that I stand here, and on a daily basis, that's my profession to go through and to deal with multiple contractors, multiple jobs, multiple scopes of work.
And you're saying...
As you know, things do not always go as planned, and that's, then I come back and Commissioner Booth gives me a hard time about having to do change orders. But again, that's what I'm trying to minimize the change orders by trying to put the pre-planning and the thought up front.
And ever since you've been here, Commissioner Booth's been trying to compliment you on doing something.
But...
But again, I'm trying to get the more defined scope of work and trying to get tighter specifications so that we know exactly what we are getting, and so that if there is a contract dispute, then we have it clearly outlined and defined.
So, you're not planning on having a prime contractor on this job?
A prime contractor? You need to define that, or we're not looking at a multi-prime contract, that's no longer done in government, so. Well, it can be done, but it's not generally a very beneficial way of letting contracts, so I'm not planning on letting a multiple prime contract.
But will you have a, person putting in the windows, will they have a contractor license number in North Carolina? Let me ask it that way.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Per our purchasing, purchasing policy, yes, sir, they would be a licensed contractor with insurance.
And they would know how to install windows properly? Would they not?
I would hope, but I don't, I don't know. Government, so we go with the lowest bid.
But we, if we go with the lowest bid, we always go with the lowest bid performed
by someone who is competent. Am I right?
We go with the lowest responsible bid, so therefore, based upon the information that we are giving, given, we make our decisions.
Do we check them out and make sure that they're good people before they're allowed to bid?
Good people? I don't know that I would define that as good people, but then...
No, good in what they do.
We call references and we check references, yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
You're going to get the job, Stan.
Time to vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, five-two, motion passes.
Under committee appointments, I've asked John Rebholz to join the Solid Waste Committee along with Frankie Waters and Stan Dethridge. On the Water Committee, I've had, I asked John Rebholz to join myself and Jerry Langley. On the Finance Committee, I've asked John Rebholz to join Frankie Waters and Jerry Langley, and asked John Rebholz to replace Gary on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Committee. And I appreciate that. Thank you for doing that.
I need a motion, please. Motion... Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven zero, unanimous, motion passes. Stan.
Without objection, I'd like to pursue the recycling of plastic in the county as a discussion first. Have somebody in the audience I'd like to speak.
We can certainly go to discussion, can't we?
Which one do you want to do?
Right.
You want to do concealed carry?
Yes, please.
Okay.
That's what's, yeah.
You just called my name, and I was ready to go to something else. Okay, we'll do concealed carry. What?
On the agenda, yeah.
On the agenda?
That's the next thing on the agenda.
Yeah, but the agenda can always be updated and modified. Okay, concealed carry. We talked about this last month. We've heard a report again from the Department of Social Services. Last month, we had a 3-3 vote because Commissioner Gary Brenn was not here. Gary Brenn, I know quite well, and sometimes you don't know how he's always going to vote, but in an election year, you pretty well know how he was going to vote. If he'd have been here, he would have definitely voted for, to protect the Second Amendment, not in theory, but in application. Now, we took a vote on the Second Amendment last week, and we agreed on this board by, I think, a vote of four to two, that we all approved of the Second Amendment in theory. But then later in the meeting, we came to discussing the concealed carry modification of our buildings, which would allow people with concealed carry permits rightfully trained, having the designation to carry a concealed weapon, and we were also discussed that we should remove the gun-free zone signs, which you know is an attractive designation, to the effect that every large-scale mass shooting we've had in this country, I'd say at least 96% of them have been done in buildings where there are gun-free zones. It is a calling card for free-fire zone. So, that was what we discussed last meeting, and we had a 3-3 vote. I'm giving you guys the opportunity to support the Second Amendment in full application and not just in theory. So, there was some, and we can discuss this fuller, and some of you guys may want to discuss this, as to why you may not want to support Second Amendment, but there was some discussion that this, having this sign and having the purpose for, just having it so that people cannot have a concealed carry weapon in these buildings, we keep weapons out of these buildings. And I think that's a suspicious argument at best. If somebody wants to go shoot up anywhere at any time, an unlawful person with evil intent, they will find a way to carry a weapon into a building, find their target, and fire repeatedly. The idea to have a concealed carry permission for those who lawfully have the right to have a weapon is that they may have that weapon at that time to return fire and stop the assailant or assailants. So, I've brought this resolution back up, I'll read it again, and it's here so that we can support the Second Amendment, not in theory, but in application and practice. So, I'll read the, I'll read the resolution. Resolution allowing concealed carry in all Beaufort County buildings, whereas the Beaufort County Commissioners support the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and the right of lawful owners of firearms to lawfully carry in Beaufort County concealed or otherwise, and whereas the Second Amendment is sacrosanct as a constitutional right of all American citizens who act lawfully in their ownership of firearms to provide for their protection and protection of others, and whereas the Second Amendment provides the constitutional right for all Americans to lawfully defend their person, their families, their property, their communities, and our United States Republic, and whereas no rational lawful republic disarms its citizens to appease the political whim of any special interest advocacy, and whereas through the clear prism of history, the great propensity of mass shootings have occurred in buildings designated as gun-free zones, effectively transitioning these public spaces into free-fire zones in the event that those persons consumed by evil intent carry firearms where those who become victims cannot. Therefore, be it resolved, the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners supports and defends the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution, do hereby remove all gun-free zone designations from all public buildings save the Beaufort County Courthouse, and therefore will allow in all lawfully permitted citizens to carry firearms on Beaufort County-owned public property. I did that for you, John, you weren't here last meeting.
Yes, Mr. Richardson.
I believe that last month, what we voted on, we had excluded social services in the Community College.
And the schools.
And the schools, yeah, because they all have boards of their own.
We did exclude all three, but I believe the Community College has a governing board, the School Board is a governing board. I'm not so sure the Department of Social Services is a governing board. They, so, they come under our jurisdiction. One of the things that worries me, I know that there's some consternation by the Department of Social Services, and I understand their opinion. I differ with my opinion in that if something happens in one of these buildings and somebody comes in without a concealed carry permit, and they have a gun or guns, and they go in and they start shooting away, and we have told people, you can't bring firearms in this building, and there's nobody there except for the police, and they come five, six minutes later, maybe it's three minutes, and there's 17 dead people, and nobody there to stop them. These events happen very quickly, and you have to move very quickly, and if you do not move quickly to stop that assailant, it could go downhill very badly and very quickly, there could be a lot of dead people. So, this is a decision we have to make, are we going to support the Second Amendment or not? I'm done. As written.
And that's your motion. Is there a second?
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to amend that resolution.
I accept the friendly amendment.
I don't like the idea of not putting names in there that we want to include, so I'll support it if we say Beaufort County Schools, Beaufort County Community College, and the Department of Social Services.
I'll accept that.
And use, and take out the word "save" and use "accept."
It means the same, it is rather archaic, so I'll go with that as well.
So, that's amended?
That's my amendment.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? Okay, John?
Okay, John.
Stan, where did you get the facts on your 95% mass shootings?
Well, it's just my estimations from what you're saying. It could be 100%.
Well, I just Googled it, and 68% occur in homes. Mass shootings, of mass shootings defined by the FBI, occur in homes.
Mass shootings.
As defined by the FBI.
Yeah. I'm talking about in public places.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't even consider what happens in homes. This is all public places. So I would think 95% would be pretty accurate, maybe higher.
Time to vote on the amendment? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed?
I got, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
As my distinguished colleague over here stated in his opening, that this was a political football, and said people would use it to their advantage. So I make a motion that this item don't come back up in six months, maybe the election will be over.
Mr. Chairman, election will be over, and the vote was taken now, and it has been recorded. Thank you.
But what I'm saying, I make a motion that this item don't come back up again in six months.
You can see it was a political bill.
Okay, Christina, you still here? Give us an update on current projects.
Commissioners, an update on the Beaufort County Detention Center locking upgrade project. In the past month, MTS personnel have come up, done additional measurements, looked at, going through the specifics as far as what would need to be done. They revised their submittals. We looked at the submittals, and the submittals have been submitted to the Department of Health and Human Services in Raleigh, so they are currently working on their review. I spoke with Mark Sorrels, the architect, and they understand that time is of the essence, and so we're looking at that. I do not have a timeframe as far as when we're expected to get it back from them, but again, we'll keep updating on that, so hopefully by this time next month, I will have an update, and hopefully we will have approval from them, and we'll be moving forward.
I thought you were going to send me a copy of that submittal. Remember? I requested.
I'm sorry, yes, yes. You did, you did. You are absolutely right. I will, yes, sir. I will get it to you tomorrow. Would you like it electronic or hard copy? It's about that big. Okay. Well, then it won't be until tomorrow afternoon, because I'm hoping to run a copy. Okay.
Stan, you want to talk about the specific, like, what's the plan?
Yes, a discussion only.
I'd like to do the plastic. Why do we have to follow exactly? I've got somebody.
Because that's an agenda.
It's an agenda item.
You can ask to change the agenda.
Let's see, can we get a little, you've got to have no votes to change.
That's right.
Yeah, get the votes to change.
You have to get the votes to change the agenda.
Are you ready, Stan?
Stan, 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 please.
All right, let me, I would like to remind everyone, I was a commissioner for 18 years, and I've come back on this board, and I forgot how much it has changed from meeting to meeting. I am astounded how you guys have to follow it one place after another. It's like there's no originality.
It's called order.
It's order.
Are you ready, Stan? Are you ready?
Yeah, okay. I make a motion that I move to discuss the issue of the plastic and recycling. Okay? Motion, okay.
All those in favor of moving, raise your right hand. All those opposed?
What a tick.
We got a five-two vote, okay. There are three, okay, I've got the floor. I'm going to make this real quick. Am I after, can I do the plastic right after this?
Just go to this one.
Okay. All right.
It is next, plastic is next.
Okay, great.
Okay.
I'm trying to help you out. There are three essential duties for each county commissioner. Now, I asked the other night of the three candidates from the Republican Party what those three essential duties were, and one of the candidates got about two-thirds of it right, and he came the closest, but there's really just three duties for all of us up here. And I will argue these three duties should be the basis for every good politician in the United States, whether it be at a local level, state level, or at federal level. It's three things we do. We set responsible policy. We perform vigilant oversight, and we conduct wise budgeting. That's it. That's all we do. Everything else we do is subservient to these three maxims. If you try to expand it from there, you're only confusing yourself, and you're confusing the public and your constituents at large. So I just want us to remember that. I want our new commissioner to learn this, and then all of us act as a board to affect this. Does anybody else want to discuss this?
Mr. Chairman, since I went to your Republican meeting, I will make sure that I pass this information on to the Democratic Party. Thank you.
That would be very wise, and I thank you.
I think that would be very useful. I don't think they've ever heard of it.
I haven't either.
That's why I brought it up.
Okay. Are you ready to move to plastic and recycling?
Yes, I am. There's a rumor foot that there, plastic in this county is not being recycled.
There's a rumor foot that plastic is not being recycled in this county, and...
Can I stop you right start with? Because that's not, that's not correct.
Good, good.
It is being recycled, so let's don't, let's don't put out there misinformation. It is being recycled. We have a recycling program, and it is in place.
Well, it would not be me putting that information out there. It's already out there.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that as we move forward, we're saying that it is there, the public can help us, and the board can help us in getting that information out about appropriate recycling.
Yes.
And not having recycling that's dirty or those kind of things that causes that recycling to be rejected. But we do have a very robust recycling program in the county, and we need folks to understand that.
Well, and I agree with that. I think recycling is important on a variety of levels. Number one, it's good for the ecology. It's good for us all to become great stewards of this planet. And moreover, it's good that we can keep this refuge out of the recycling, so save, what is it, $50 a ton now we save? What does it cost now for solid waste? Does anybody can give me a figure on that? It was $45 a ton years and years ago. What is it now, 50, 55?
I don't think anybody's got it right off the top of their head. We'd be glad to get that information to you.
Yeah, I would love that. But basically, that is the rumor foot, and to speak to that, my daughter is here, and she was one of the people, and I've heard it from many people, but she's one of the people that informed me, there's a lot of folks in the city of Washington and outside the city of Washington that are not recycling now because they have a feeling, a robust feeling, that that refuge is not making it to the proper places. And if we could speak to that tonight, speak about, to the concerns, and then get the word out as to what is actually happening and how it can become even more efficient. But Meredith, would you like to come up? This is my...
You can't do that. No, you can't do that.
I can't do it.
Brian, I'm happy to speak to that, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Brian.
We do have a recycling program. As you'll recall, years ago, we had a single-stream recycling program where when you went to the convenience site, you had to put your plastic in one, you had to put your glass in one, you had to put your cardboard in one, you had to put your newsprint in one. Studies showed that people would, that it was more advantageous to get people to participate in recycling if they could throw it all together. So what we now have is called co-mingled recycling. You still have to separate your cardboard, because that goes in a different bin, but now you can throw all your recyclables in one container. That recycling goes to ECVC in Greenville. It is taken over to ECVC in Greenville, and they separate it. We pay them to do that. It's a separate contract. The one thing that the city of Washington has run into recently, we've been lucky in that we haven't seen that issue yet. The problem is people are putting things in the recycling bin that they're not supposed to put in the recycling bin. When you put pizza boxes that have grease and leftover pizza in them, in the cardboard, it contaminates the entire load, and they will throw that load away. If you have glass jars that you don't clean out, if you have a plastic container that has peanut butter in it, instead of cleaning it out, if you throw it in the recycling bin, it can contaminate the entire load, and they will reject those loads. That has happened to the city of Washington. That's why if you live in the city of Washington, you may have gotten a little flyer stuck on your recycling can that says you are not supposed to put these things in there, and if you continue to do it, we'll charge you a fine of whatever that fine is. So we do have a recycling program, and our efforts are to try to help people understand that recycling program and to recycle. Now, we recycle from the county side at the convenience sites. The municipalities can recycle at the curb, but it all goes to ECVC in Greenville, because that's the only recycling opportunity that we have right now, so...
Well, the problem I was hearing from people is that they were thinking that it was not being accepted at the solid waste end, which is our end. And you're bringing to light that that's not happening, and that's good, but my daughter cannot speak. Is that what you're saying?
She can only speak during public comments. This is not a town hall meeting, so she could have come up during public comments.
Okay, we're doing it that way.
We can get her next time.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Dethridge, I'm not saying that people are not throwing stuff away that shouldn't be thrown away. That's obviously happened. We are encouraging people to recycle, so I'm sure you will see some things in the municipal solid waste stream that shouldn't be there. And what we try to encourage people is to pull that out and to recycle, but they've got to do it in the proper manner so that they don't contaminate the rest of it. Because I can assure you that right now, the problem is the cost of recycling. It used to be that we used to get money for our recycling. We would send the recycling over, we'd get paid for it. With the collapse of the recycling market, with China saying we no longer want the United States trash, that market has gone to pieces.
Right.
So we are actually paying to get rid of recycling now. And the recycling companies are becoming very, very tight because they are squeezing that bottom line as tight as they can. So if they have something that's going to contaminate a load, they reject the entire load because they will not allow it to get in their system and screw up their efficiencies because they are squeezing it just as tight as they can to make money and not lose it on it. So what we've got to do is continue to educate people about what recycling is, what's appropriate to recycle. Don't throw your dirty pizza boxes in the recycling can, they go in the trash. Don't throw your food line or grocery bags in the recycling. They don't go there. They gum up the materials because a lot of it is really mechanical, mechanica, mechanical in how they do it because they're trying to make it as efficient as possible. And what that does is it gets in the mechanism and gums it all up. So they will reject an entire load if they see a grocery bag in there. So we've got to, we've got to continue to educate people about that.
Well, since we're speaking to that, what's the best way to do that from this standpoint? Can you put out some press releases? We're talking about it now. Talk about it again, maybe have a workshop, a public workshop?
I think it's continue to talk about it. I think it's put the right message out there. When people say, well, I hear you're throwing it away, tell them absolutely we are not. Immediately, immediately correct that record. Don't let that continue to go on. You know, that's what we have to do, and we continue to do that.
Commissioner Waters, hang on a moment.
Okay.
Commissioner Dethridge, your daughter is welcome to come to the solid waste meeting on Thursday morning at 10 o'clock. Well, maybe she can, I mean, you're on the committee, so maybe she can relay whatever it is, and you can relay it to the committee on Thursday.
Okay, back to, we are keeping plastic, other refuge that is being recycled out of the landfill, therefore we're not paying for the transfer cost, right?
We are paying a fee to haul it to ECVC, and I don't think we're paying anything. Where's Christina? Are we, we are paying for, there is a portion, and then there's also an offset that we are paying to the city of Washington to help subsidize their recycling program. Once it gets to the point where they match, we're not going to be able to do that anymore. That's part of what the solid waste committee's been talking about.
Yes.
Some of the discussions that the solid waste committee's had, and that's what we're hoping that they continue to work through and to determine what's the best way, best mechanism for it.
Now that I'm a new member of the solid waste committee, I guess I'll learn a few of these things. All right.
Hood, you have a resolution?
This is the, the governor's response to HB 370 resolution, Commissioner Hood Richardson. HB 370 was a law that came out that failed, oh, no, that passed the legislature, both houses, and it had to do with mandating that sheriffs turn over ICE to ICE certain people that had detainers on them. The Sheriff's Association came out and followed it. I don't know why, because everybody runs around and says, well, we're doing what it says, so what difference does it make? But what it really comes down to is if sheriffs didn't do what they were supposed to do, they could be fined for it. That was the reason they didn't like it. Guess what? Law enforcement doesn't like law enforcement. Isn't that a surprise? That was the real reason the thing went down. So, but we sent our resolution, which passed here, to the governor, and the governor bopped it back with a smart little remark and a couple of page paragraph. This was sent by Lee Lilly, Director of Legislative Affairs, Officer of Governor Cooper. The sentence in here that bothers me is mandating sheriffs to do the work of federal agents as HB 370 would do could inhibit their ability to prioritize resources to best protect their counties. Well, guess what? The sheriff's a Democrat. He's not for this anyway. He likes sanctuaries, and so he's not going against his base, and that's what this is all about. And my whole purpose on putting this in here was to let you know the smart alecky remark that the governor gave, that we're not mandating that sheriffs go out and find people that ICE, to turn over to ICE, but the law did mandate that once you accidentally discovered them, you had to turn them over if they could be turned over. So this is nothing but pure politics on the part of the sheriff, and my purpose here tonight is to call him out on that issue.
Mr.?
The governor.
Mr. Richardson, you said the sheriff was a Democrat?
No.
Okay.
The wrong word. I apologize.
Mr. Richardson, flood maps update.
Well, I'll ask the manager to give us an update.
There's no update from the last time we spoke. It is still as we described last time.
We're expecting to get these in when, July?
No, the LFD, the letter final determination date is December the 19th, so the effective date would be June 19th of 2020 due to the statutory six-month hold period.
All right, so nothing has changed. Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson, Brenda Hamilton.
Brenda Hamilton, so I'm going to ask the manager and the sheriff, because I sent them an email here three or four weeks ago. They were supposed to have some information back, and I don't think I even got a response from it, so I want to ask them to report to the public what's the status of this situation.
I'll defer to Chief Deputy Rose. They have the evidence with MicroTrace, and from that, he can address.
Okay, so the update that I have is that there were three items of the bunch that were sent to MicroTrace that were tested. If you remember, that they're the experts in the field of trying to gather this latent evidence that, and fiber evidence, so they were given the task to look at everything that we had and come up with a test that they thought that would be, that would get us what we needed to know. The tests that they ran, they found human and nutria hair, which we knew was already there, and they said no hair that was consistent with a large canine, feline, or bear. Email from them on October 30th says that they'll examine some of the other fecal samples that they had that they thought was the next level. They went for the low-hanging fruit first. They're going to try to sample and test a couple of other items before they're at the point where they, they've exhausted what they think that they could do to be, to be potentially changing as far as the information that we have.
So we're still waiting on MicroTrace before we go to the University of Florida?
That was my understanding, was that we were going to get the items that could be tested for MicroTrace tested, and then that way, once, if they determine information that we didn't have, we may be able to answer some of the questions before it got to Florida. But if not, then we would be able to send all of the samples that we had, along with all of the reports, to the University of Florida so they could pretty much start from scratch with what they had.
Do you have any idea when they may re... Do you have any idea when they may report?
I wish I knew, and Lieutenant Van Lanningham and a couple of the other investigators have been pushing and prodding, but just like with a lot of other vendors and samples and lab, it's their labs, and it's pretty much on their time, but they are, we are paying customers of theirs, so we are trying to stay on them, and they are getting us information as requested, but it has been a hussy little process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Let's go.